Electione, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Lord, our Father in heaven, we come before you this day thanking you for all things that well with us as it is, for all the blessings of life. We ask your blessing now upon us as we enter into this meeting. May you bless it with wisdom and knowledge and patience to make the most correct decisions for the betterment of our city and for the citizens. Bless our nation as we enter into an election year. May everything be cordial and may things be safe during this year. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
So do you stay there or watch it?
It makes me just see. It went down on the flash.
We never looked at it, did we, Charles?
No, never looked at it.
Okay. First item of business, improvements.
I think a motion will be accepted at the last minute?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion is second and further discussion.
Either one of us, Charles, and I both seconded it about the same time. I'll make the motion, pay Beatles, how's that?
I'll second it.
Motion is second, those in favor, say five times. Post. Next item of business is the Bills.
Nope, I made the motion already.
I'll second.
We didn't vote on the first one. We voted on the second one.
I thought that we was voting on them as well. All right. Motion is second, those in favor, say five times.
You didn't show up.
To say.
Y'all gotta get excited here.
Motion passes. Not showing any old business. First item of new business is new hire.
Cameron Lee Boston.
Is that Sam?
No.
Minton. We hired a...
No comment.
We hired Sam Minton, part-time. He is working right now three days a week, two Wednesdays, Thursdays until the weather kind of pairs up. Just like to make, see if y'all make a motion for us to keep him part-time, you know, through the first part of the year anyway, see how he works out.
Through when?
Uh, through twenty-one.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
Calendar year.
Part-time?
Part-time at this time, yes.
What kind of rate of pay?
Who is gonna ask that? I think it's eleven dollars an hour.
What would he be doing with?
Right now, he's working on sanitation crew.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to hire him for three days a week.
Yes.
For the calendar year.
Well, with weather pairing up, he could go to Fuller.
Well, that's fine with me, but I mean, you want to keep him at part-time status all the way through then add to it if we need to?
Unless we, let's hire him full-time, see how he works out.
Eleven dollars an hour.
Second. Motion is second and further discussion. Those in favor, say five times. Post. Motion passes. Next item is new member for commission board, and that would be for planning and zoning and put up Jaren Ball for a member of the planning and zoning commission. He's agreed to do it.
Make the motion that we accept Jaren Ball for the planning and zoning commission.
I'll second it. They're willing to do it. That would be a good idea.
And we still got an open spot on there too, and on the board of adjustments that we gotta fill, so.
Jaren's a young guy, isn't he? Aren't you? He went to Beaverdale Elementary.
Okay, we have a motion is second, those in favor, say five times. Post. Motion passes. Next item is the resolution for Arbor Day to set it at April 26, 2024. Is that right, Jill?
Yes, just April 26.
Uh-huh. That's when it's scheduled for the national. But we do this as part of the Tree City USA program.
I'm going to establish April 26 as Arbor Day. Rebutting?
Second.
Motion is second and further discussion. Those in favor, say five times. Post. Motion passes. All right. Larry, you have anything?
Yes. I don't know if y'all remember a few years ago when Lake Michigan had the big water crisis. They switched their water source intake and had a adverse effect to the lead water lines. Well, that has tripled down now to EPA, to the national level, and now it's down to the state. So we have until October of this year to do a water line assessment on city side of the meter and the homeowner's side. So Travis has been working on that. We're gonna have to divide, I think him and Jill's printed off all the information. We went through and identified probably forty-five percent of orders. We've got a little, they have made a little sheet that we're gonna ask homeowners when they come in and pay their bills to verify what they have on their side, whether it's gonna be PVC, galvanized, lead, copper, polyester, mix. I've never, I've been here thirty-one years and I've never seen a lead service line from a meter to the house. I'm not certain of them out there. But this is the first step of the EPA is gonna recommend, or is gonna make us do.
Is there any federal funding coming down to help with that?
They haven't decided.
Yeah, to be determined.
There's the fifty-seven percent.
If there's any federal funds.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. There is, there's a fifty-seven percent, or a hundred percent, I guess it's a hundred percent funding with a fifty-seven percent forgiveness if you have to do much after that, but that's still a couple of there. This is step one. After the inventory is done, that they compile all the information. Then there'll be a phase two, which could take up to ten years to implement and get it taken care of, but this is phase one, and it's gonna be very time-consuming, so.
Well, and one thing too, Craig, wrong, anything built after nineteen eighty-eight is exempt.
Correct. That's when the lead come out of the copper and they stop using the lead solder joints.
We got about four hundred houses built in more than half a million.
So we got a lot of older homes. They're gonna do a lot of replacements, right?
Well, if they're lead, but we don't know if they are. That's what Larry's talking about. Thirty-one years he's been here, he's not seen one.
Yeah, I'm not certain of them out there, but I haven't seen it.
What about the people that they really had no idea what their service line is to the meter?
That will be, after the survey comes in, we'll have to go door-to-door and see if they will let us, allow us to look under their house or go into the pantry. I'm assuming we can go in the pantry with the hot water here is and see what stuff does.
Well, it could be combination of things.
It could be. Well, all we, all they wanna know is what it is when it comes in their house. Now, what they have spread out through their house is none our concern.
From their house?
From the house to the meter.
So why can't you just dig down right by the meter and find it?
We're gonna have to.
You may have to.
There's seventeen hundred meters.
Yeah.
And then you got a piece of yard.
Are you doing this summer?
We're trying not to easy with out here.
And tearing up people's yards and they're not gonna be happy.
I thought that might be what you end up having to do.
Yeah, we're gonna have to some of them, probably.
But if they know, they would just take what they say.
Yep.
But hit like shit under his house.
That's kind of a sell-off.
I mean, you know.
If they say, no, we don't know, and you come up, you don't need to say, okay, we're digging yard.
I know what's coming to the houses.
You know.
Of course, we were building.
You have to get it after our place, so we can get over here to duck work and things.
It would damage it, I guess, a little bit.
I ain't getting a little bit.
Well, no, that's, they will do. We'll let Travis do that.
You crawl into my house, I'll get that going too.
I've got Kentucky Water, they're gonna do a water sewer rate study, look at the rates. I feel that the water rates are gonna have to be adjusted this year. It's been several years, and same thing with wastewater sites as well. They should have it done before the new budget. We will start transposing numbers from 2023 to 2024 on the budget, so if you have any needs, please put it in writing and we'll look into it and see what we, what we have on that.
Got a piece of paper? I got a big one.
It's all you.
I can remember that.
Our yearly water loss, I think Mike's gonna do his presentation as well. State of Kentucky, Kentucky Water says anything fifteen percent or less is considered a well-run, maintained water system. Ours in the past have been running three to seven percent. This, for twenty-twenty-three, our water loss was at six percent, so we're well, well under their average in what they consider to be a well-run system. It looks like here that we purchased ninety-five, ninety-five million gallons of water from a water district. We produced twenty-six million out of wells, which gives us a grand total of, it looks like one billion two hundred fifteen thousand, or one million two hundred fifteen thousand. The difference will be, would be six percent of it, so that's, the lease is not configured in here. The leases are included here, so we have a very good crew. They see a leak, they get on it, Johnny on the spot, and we've had a few pretty good ones this past year, so all of us, it's been a really, really well year. That's all that I have.
We had everything fixed up on.
Water line is in, we've done the groundwater advisory, back to East comeback, great. I think the only thing they like to do is pour concrete on the donut shop side.
I think it's poor.
Okay.
Yeah, the donut shop side is, but the other side is.
Okay.
The asphalt, so it like.
Yeah. He called me and said that there was sidewalk under there when he pulled it up, he said, but there was asphalt over top, and I said, just asphalt in the back, that's, you know, his whole apartment is, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did water get under the road?
Did the water get under the road? Well.
Did you notice, did you notice the hole that's developing there?
That hole, that, that leak had nothing to do with it.
That's always.
That's always where it started.
I thought they fixed that.
They didn't go that far.
They didn't go that far?
They did do a dig out on that.
They didn't go that far?
No, they dig it up.
They didn't go all the way to intersection.
There was no undercut. Last undercut they dug was right there in front of Randy Brown's house, East Fifth Street.
No, they did some in front of them.
I thought they did it in front of Fuller's.
They did.
Well, that's East Fifth Street, is what I called. East Fifth Street.
Up in front of Duana, as they did a little bit, but that's about her driveway, is about where I think it stopped as far as undercut.
So are they gonna go back this year and do the rest of it?
No.
I doubt it.
I thought that was in the plans that they thought.
No, the original was to go in and do the undercut downtown and pay a bit, and then come back next year and pay from Goshen to sixty-two, and grind and pay it, but they were able to get it all done in the same year. But they never had any intentions of undercutting the rest of it.
Let me back it. What I call the undercut, they undercut everything and they put rock back on top. They had soft spots like their stoplight, and at East Fifth Street, they actually had to go down an extra two or three foot, so that's what I was calling undercut. Yeah, they did undercut everything up to.
I think it's about her driveway.
Yeah.
I just thought maybe water had gotten in there, that's why it started doing that again.
Water was under, but it did not cause that.
I wish they'd just dug that one spot out, because it's done that for years.
And they noted.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Sandy?
Is Amy gonna be here tonight? One of my main questions is probably for him, and then the other thing that, just wondering where we might be on Oldham Park and with those buildings.
They all, they all didn't come down. I mean.
Are we?
Everything is, has been lappened, dated.
Are we anywhere near being able to, is that just luck sometimes?
Well, I mean, we can take a man, that's not a problem.
Well, since she's talking about it, can I jump in here?
Please, it's your over parks.
What do you all want to do with Oldham? Do you want to refurbish it? Do you wanna change it? Do we wanna change into something else? I mean, do you wanna stick with the baseball, baseball field? Do we wanna change it into something else? I mean, we could go in a completely different direction. We could do the, we could do the skate park down there or something. I mean, there's a couple of different directions we could go, but we need to decide what we're gonna do down there, and then, like you say, tear down the buildings, let's start over, or change and do this, or if we're gonna keep it, fix the buildings back.
The bathroom area of that building there has no, have to stay, because that is the electrical point, mechanical room, and that's where the power's fed for the water.
It's probably the least.
Packy.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a good word.
Well, we could refurbish that one, make it a little bit better though, couldn't we?
Yeah. I mean, structurally, it's pretty sound, but it's.
Is there any way to pop the doors?
It's hard to keep anything over there. We put new electrical service for the basketball court, and it's already tore out.
Okay.
No, they tore it off the pole.
Yeah, tore the face off of it. I mean.
See, that's what I was looking at, something like the skate park, they can't tear up concrete hardly. I know they can. Don't get me wrong, I said hardly.
Are you gonna light it?
Yeah, we'd have to light it, and then they're right back where we were before. But again, I didn't know, I didn't know if we should, if we should go a different direction with it, or should we just fix what we got, or what do y'all?
Is there any way to easily do a community survey to feel, see what?
Well, we're not sure what would be best in there for the kids of the community.
We've got the survey that we did a few years ago. It's just, the skate, they don't. A lot of people keep putting in one of those roller skating rink, well, that's adults. We did a survey of the kids, and roller skating rink was way down there. In fact, I don't even know that it was.
But a skate park was high.
Skate park with the skateboards and stuff would, was, would be something to do.
And we've got a lot of skateboarders.
Yeah, that'd be something to be done.
Well, they also use bicycles in those things too. It's not like, you know, they just use it for skateboards. They use bicycles in those things too, so I mean, it's not, it is something to look at, but is that where we wanna put it?
You need to talk to Ben Wood.
Yeah.
Because you're a huge liability.
That's what I think.
Yeah, I know, that's why I say.
Of course, you don't mean liability, but liability doesn't bother me. If we were worried about liability, we wouldn't have a fire station, police station, or sidewalks.
So I mean, I didn't know what y'all.
But you always have somebody, if they do a skate park, some mom's gonna sue, because Johnny got his arm broke at a skate park.
Now, soccer, they joined the sky out of Bowling Green, so I definitely, they'll leave the park.
Yep.
They're still gonna be playing at the park, but they're, they're no more a casa, I mean, for that.
Well.
Football, youth football, got a war for, could they come back, you know?
Well, but I don't think Oldham will work for it, because their size, the space.
Well, they're also getting to play out here at the high schools, what I was told by the football people, is they're gonna let the, the youth football play at the high school on the turf.
If they got the turf, they can do that.
Before, because they've.
Yep, before they couldn't, now because it's turf, they can. So I mean, I mean, we, we had plans and we were gonna do things, but it's kinda changed over the last year and a half.
But I would love to see some improvements at Oldham Park.
Well, but again, do we wanna keep it like it is now, or change it to something?
Tear the buildings down, that's all I got. That's up to y'all on that.
Well, it needs something to be used and productive.
Yes.
Whatever that, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. And what kind of, I mean, I know, I can't imagine what the liability would be, but I do feel like that's something that would be utilized.
Oh, skate park? I have no problem with the liability on that, it's just something you gotta think about, especially when you had bicycles in here.
Yeah, and they will be on there, because mostly ones I've ever seen had bicycles on.
I mean, unless you put a security guard there around the block, you can't do that.
Because they're just as crazy as those people on skateboards, they do, they go up and do the three sixties in the air and everything.
Was that on the top of the list for the youth?
It was one of my, I can't remember the exact number, but it was.
At one time, it was bump to a heart for a water park, but I.
I don't think that would be where that would go.
Well, the only thing you'd wanna do here was some type of a splash pack, you know. I hear stuff about a water park pit. A lot of people you say we need to do one like Letchfield, but.
Letchfield worse than it had done.
Yeah, but you can't tell people that.
I quit singing that song whenever I've got more details.
Theirs cost five point one million dollars to build twelve years ago.
Did you know I wanted to pull a little long, but.
And, you know.
And what a splash.
A splash pad, I mean, but they're, and they're wanting to build them with the county park or?
Yeah, they're gonna have one, I think, a small one.
Well, they have a small one, I think they got a grant to build, put in a new one. And again, do you wanna do prepared services?
Well, any type of splash pad, you would have to collect the water to recirculate it, and now you got testing methods to make sure the water is safe.
You can do two ways. They'll let you run it out down the ditch. Yeah. And run fresh water.
Well, being, being a city-owned, it would have to have a dechlorination process before a homeowner can take their water hose and put it in a ditch, melt the sand. The sand, you would have to have some type of dechlorination before we can do it. There's a different guideline for us, do the ditch of water, so.
Maybe get that survey out and look at what some of the top ones are.
Arch regrange or something, but, because a lot of that was laid out for that down at the old wastewater.
Right, that's why I say, you wanna put some of that up here instead, so.
Big archery.
Well, but you don't wanna get stuff spread out in too many different locations, because then.
And then again, you wanna maybe put some of the, you know, maybe put some of the places for maybe the RVs to park up here. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we could do up there.
City on campground.
We could put a city on, like I said, put the RVs up here if we want to, that's in town and.
And it could be used year-round.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's already flat, all we'd have to do, just have water hookups for it, and that'd be it.
Electrical water and have collect.
Again, that's just a thought, I just thought, I was trying to think of things we could do.
The only, the only problem with something like a campground is the residential area behind it, the housing authority and stuff behind it.
If we could do something for all ages, I would, you know, I would like that, something that's gonna interest.
You've got all kinds of them at the.
Kid.
Pick apart too.
Yeah, but I mean, like splash pad, or maybe not the skate park, because lord have mercy, I couldn't do that, but I could watch. But you know, something, you know, just cause what I'm thinking along the lines of, I just remember when Oldham Park used to just be packed.
Booming.
All of y'all do, yeah, maybe not you, you're a super camp boy.
The other one is now, because it was always.
Yeah.
Baseball season.
But times, times have changed.
Yeah. Well, and the person that called in last week about the lights at the park was upset that there wasn't no lights in Oldham. They even admitted they would rather have the lights at the park down there, because we don't have lights down there, than have them up here, because they like the cords down there better, but they've always had the lights up here, so.
I'd just like for it to look nice.
But if you put lights at the court up there, are they gonna take care of them, or are they gonna?
Yeah, they tear them down up there too, they do, they tear everything else up down there, so.
And can we do a park, you know, in Louisville? Well, we got that out there, I'm thinking of, I'm just trying to think of something that looks nice, that could be utilized by most multiple generations.
Like a dog park. They use that for the dog park down there.
Go in stupid all that, pay later.
No, but I just want, I just want it to look nice.
Charles?
I have another, I think David may have something in a minute, I don't know whether the mic bells or not.
Yeah, they did.
But that's gonna rest to them, David.
Kevin?
No, I'm good. I was actually gonna bring the same thing up, Sandy brought up, but I thought, since she's talking about it, I might as well just say something, because I was gonna ask.
Well, you would've said something, but.
Well, but I was gonna, I was gonna say, you know, I was gonna ask, do you thought we were to try and do something different with Oldham, that's what I wanted to.
Yeah, I should've checked with you first, Kevin, I apologize for that.
No, I'm fine with that, I was fine with it.
I have a storage building over there, so I drive past there all the time, so.
Thank you, you would've done better.
Yeah.
Mike Allen.
Uh-oh.
Thank you.
Thanks for reading.
For what? You gonna read the whole thing?
Nah, I'm just hitting some high points from the album.
Because it always amazes me.
You got any questions?
Yeah, I know. Parking lot, that's what.
It always amazes me what happens in these things.
If you look on page two there, total accidents for the year was two hundred and seven. You can figure every year it's gonna be from two hundred to two hundred and twelve, every year, year in, year out, almost automated. Again, there was seventeen wrecks between Walmart Stoplight and McDonald's.
That's the hot spot, I think.
Well, it's more, has been in the past, but just to kinda show you and break it down how many wrecks there are from Stoplight down to Walmart, which was seventeen, down to McDonald's. Others, nine on the Parkway, sixty-two in parking lots, eighty-two on sixty-two and two thirty-one and thirty-four on City Street. If you look over there to the right, all the way over at the officers, how many officer were? Jeff had sixty, me twenty-six, Tommy forty-six, I had sixty-two, and Brad had thirteen, so.
They're not wrecking in the middle of the night, are they?
No.
Pretty much daytime, I believe.
So the US sixty-two, is that east and west intersection?
Yeah, all of sixty-two.
Cause I thought two eighty-two.
All sixty-two and two thirty-one.
So parking lots, is it better or worse than it was last year?
About the same, they're usually about the same. Next page is just a citation, just got different things that we arrested people or wrote citations for, you can look at those yourself. The shoplifting was seventeen, it was down a little bit. If you look on down there, warrants served in two thousand twenty-three, that was sixty-six warrants that were served. If you look on down towards the bottom, possession controlled substance with pills, there was four, possession of meth was twelve, marijuana was six, drug paraphernalia was nine, trafficked in meth was six, and controlled substances not in proper containers, three. Next page is a page that just shows cases that were worked, cases that still open. You see four cases that still open. Others, they'll never be closed because their identity theft, where we had to file, where people had their identity stolen in another state or several states away, and we had to enter it in Lincoln and CIC and had to open a case to do that. So that's, that's written one of that. Shows you down there at the bottom, kinda officer, how many cases there were. And then if you look to the last page, it's the, well, there again, there's the Walmart McDonald's, seventeen, there's fourteen forty-fives, three forty-sixths, which is, is wrecked with injuries, and I'm happy to say we didn't have any fatalities last year. If you look at that total number of calls, twenty-two, we had seven officers, and we had twenty-eight ninety-seven, and then twenty-three, we had five full-time officers, and we still had pretty much the same amount of calls, twenty-eight seventy-three. Alcohol-related DUI, alcohol intoxication in public place, last year was twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three was fifteen. And if you look there, the alcohol intoxication in public place in twenty-two was fifteen, and twenty-three was six, so that kinda flip-flop there. Alcohol-related DUIs were eight to seven.
Almost a half.
And then five drug-related, and two drug-related in twenty-three. So that's just a little overall thing, if y'all have any questions about anything, just ask me, I'd be happy to answer.
When will we be back to seven officers?
And that's a great wait Thursday. Well, uh, and that's a great wait Thursday. So if they're gonna be with us for probably months.
Right.
And be with somebody pretty much till June. Uh, they may be working a shift in a car by themselves, but there'll be somebody with them till June.
Somebody else, you just mean somebody else on duty or someone else in the car?
No, somebody else be on duty.
On duty, so it'll be two.
They'll ride with somebody for a couple of weeks.
Right.
And just let them drive, let them take the calls. And after a couple of weeks, we'll probably put them in a car by themselves, but there'll be somebody out with them to just let, just kind of shadow them for a while.
They'll have us fully stacked again.
Anybody else have any questions? But we're glad they're great waiting and they both did terrific job. They they scored in the high eighties, low nineties. Uh, and they've done really good. We're really proud of them. And they're great to wait Thursday, so, uh, Chris and Tommy and myself, we're going up Thursday to cheer on them.
So I'll go over mine briefly. On the first page, you'll see that in twenty twenty-two, we had eight hundred and seventeen runs. In twenty-three, we had five hundred and sixty-five.
So what do you attribute it to?
So if you look at the next one, the medicals went from five seventy-three to three forty-four. Um, what we did is we were having a lot of calls of, we were going out with everything EMS was going on. So it was been sick for three days, need to go to the doctor, stubbed my toe or I fell down or my stomach hurts, headache for two days. There was a lot of them calls that we were getting caught on as well. So what we did, we changed our protocols because we was running over eight hundred runs a year to where we go on, we call them a high five, but there's actually one of five. So anything trauma, any fall from height, um, heart attack, unresponsive, difficulty breathing, seizures, diabetics, anything that's would unresponsive, CPR in progress, things like that would would be considered a true medical emergency is the only things we're getting paged on now. Unless when EMS gets to a residence and they need like lift assist, then they'll call us out. So we had a big drop in them calls from five seventy-three to three forty-four. On fire-related calls, and I have a breakdown here in a minute, uh, twenty-two was one oh seven and twenty-three was one oh four. Vehicle accidents were down from ninety-three to eighty-four. And then other calls, I'll go through that in minutes, forty-four to thirty-three. On the fire responses, thirty-five percent of them were structure fires. There was thirty-six of them. There were five vehicle fires in twenty-three, thirty-five brush or rubbish fires, and then twenty-eight fire alarms.
The accident, I'm interrupting you. The only fire alarms, is that getting any better? I know in the past years, we've had a lot of problems with false alarms.
Um, it is. We have not, knock on wood, have not had one yet this year. And we're three months in, so that's pretty, pretty good. Um, our biggest one last year was Ratazu.
Yeah.
We run a Ratazu probably twelve, fifteen times, something like that altogether. So it was probably our biggest one.
My other out of the city, so.
Um, but it it has been down. The vehicle fires are down quite a bit. Last year, I think we had close to twenty-five, twenty-six, and the year before that was around that number and had been that number for quite some years. Last year, there was only five. Um, so that was pretty surprising. The vehicle accidents, um, there were sixty-four with injury, twenty without. And we had no fatalities this year. On the other responses, I have it kind of broke down between hazmat and gas leaks. Um, some of those aren't full-blown leaks. Those are, somebody had smelled it in their house. We went in to try to detect, locate. There's fourteen of those, nine down tree calls, six down power lines, and four flooding calls. And then the last one is the runs for fire department for all the departments in the county. Uh, Beaver Dam had the most with five sixty-five, and it's twenty-seven percent of the fire calls in Ohio County Beaver Dam respondents was called out too.
What's what's the protocol? I know right now we're setting up a fire disaster, but if the Beaver Dam Fire Department was strictly a city department and didn't leave the city, what would happen?
Not real sure.
I mean, I know we would lose the county funding.
Yeah, we would lose, we'd lose the county funding. We would lose the, all the fire dues. Um, and then as far as them people in them areas, I'm not real sure. Somebody else would have to cover them. I'm not real sure.
What would they do with the ISO rating?
It would probably plummet it. Well, no, it may not. It would still, it'd very many the same, because, and I'll go over that. The ISO ratings, uh, has a city rating and a house city rating. It shouldn't affect it any.
Okay, what's our house city rating?
It's the same.
But if we did not respond outside of the city, would the, those people still get that ISO rating or would they have to go with whatever department?
They'd have to go with whatever department would cover them. And like, pretty well from Jackson Lane all the way north out Rochester, Prentice, all them areas would probably fall under Cromwell, and they're a ten. Um, they didn't complete their survey. So it would be pretty rough. All Bluegrass Crossing, every bit of that would go to a ten on ISO, so. Their insurance would likely skyrocket because Cromwell, for instance, being a ten and not completing their ISO doesn't technically have a rating for this one. It's not classified.
So the Beaver Dam Fire Department is actually saving a lot of people a lot of money outside of the city limits.
Yes. And and we've gotten better with it too.
Oh, I know. It just went down.
Yep.
You all are doing a great job.
Yeah, trying to.
People outside the city just need to realize that.
People inside the city need to realize that too.
We just hear a lot about annexation and everything else. They don't want in the city, they don't pay city taxes, but they don't realize how much money we're saving at the beginning. That we don't have to.
True. Um, the next thing I'll talk about is the ISO rating. So the ISO rating is, um, they do it every so many years. They come and they do a survey. They go through the fire department, they check our apparatuses we have, equipment we have, personnel, um, how we respond on calls, how many people we take with us when we respond, what are other agencies coming to assist us, what they're capable of. Um, they look at the water systems, Ohio County water and Beaver Dam water. They see what the hydrants are capable of flowing, their pressure testing. And then they also take the dispatch center to see what technology they have and what they can provide for us for information. Um, the ratings run from one to ten, one being the best, ten being the worst. Um, more like a grading for the system for the fire departments. We were a five, five X. Five's in the city, five X is for the county that we cover. Um, effective April, we will go to a four, four X. So our ISO rating has improved. Um, for the area that we cover and the department that we have in apparatus, we have, it's really good ratings, so. Um, for the insurance companies that do recognize ISO and PPC, this goes out, like I say, it becomes effective in April. And from there on, everybody's insurance should see a drop in insurance for insurance companies that do follow us.
Well, they may not see a drop, but they won't see as big an increase.
Right.
Because I know one thing, through KLC, we've learned with all of the tornadoes and the floods, the losses have been catastrophic over the last couple of years, and you're starting to see everything go up.
Go up.
Premium-wise.
Yep.
Recover.
And if anybody wants a copy of it, they're kind of thick, so I didn't really print out a whole bunch, but I can email it to you if you want a copy.
Any questions? Thank you. Jill, do you have anything? Luke?
I don't have anything to, I'm just listening.
Entertained motion to go on closed session.
Make a motion to go on closed session.
I'm ready to pick you up in session.
Are we backing up in session?
I'm waiting for somebody.
I'm making a.
Say it again. Motion in a second. Ain't further discussion. Those in favor of that, signify that. Posting. Motion passes. Okay, we did the closed session, discussed some possible litigation or some things. Uh, no business was conducted. And, uh, does anyone else have anything else to bring up tonight? Entertained motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.